I will call to order the meeting of the Wilsonville City Council Work Session at 5:32 PM. And we will start with review of items on consent. I actually had, on the first point on this, I would like to remove the item on consent regarding the metro community enhancement grants and move that to new business.
So when you have your motion in the regular meeting, you'll just need to state as amended?
We're just, we're just gonna say-
State that in a-
Okay. Any, any other comments on the order of agenda as presented? Okay. Any councillor concerns? And I will note that council president Ocreval is attending the meeting due to a distant family event. She's attending, she is, she is attending via Zoom. Thank you. Our first item on the agenda is with Ms. Rybold regarding vertical housing development zones. Thank you.
Good evening, Mayor Fitzgerald and city councillors. My name is Kimberly Rybold, Senior Planner with the city. If you give me one moment, I will share my screen over here and pull up my presentation for the evening. So back in May, I was here along with Jordan Vance to give you a quick overview of vertical housing development zones and gather questions and research information that you were seeking to inform future conversation about potential implementation of vertical housing in Wilsonville to incentivize mixed-use development, both in the town center potentially, as well as the Vilbois Village Center. Tonight, I have Becky Hewitt with me from Eco Northwest. Her team took the questions and ideas that you gave us at that meeting in May and prepared a memo that is included within your packet this evening. And the intent of this memo is to provide you some answers to those questions and a little more context about how vertical housing development zones have been used in other communities to incentivize mixed-use development. Tonight, Becky will present some key findings and considerations that are within that memo fairly briefly, but we do want to use the bulk of the time we have this evening to allow you to ask any questions you have about that information, as well as to seek your direction on how you would like us to move forward. So with that, I will turn it over to Becky.
Thanks, Kim. Hi, councillors. Many of you are trying to dial up on my screen, but nice to at least sort of meet you. I'm a senior project manager at Eco Northwest and I've been working with several others in my office on this project. I've worked with several other jurisdictions on navigating the decisions around whether to implement various different tax abatement programs to incentivize housing in particular. And so I'm gonna just share some highlights from the memo that Kim mentioned in your packet and then see what further questions you have.
Say, excuse me, before-
Becky?
Before we go forward, I wanted to check and see if the audio is working okay for Are you all able to hear that okay? Okay. Thank you.
And are you able to hear me as well in the room?
I think just a little closer to the mic is more clear.
I will try. Let me make my face very large. We'll see how we do.
Great, thank you.
Okay. So the questions that are summarized here on this slide are kind of a distillation of the questions that Kim reported back to us from your last meeting on this subject. And we're gonna kind of step through our answers to each of these questions in this presentation. And again, there's more information in the, in the memo and I can field additional questions if you have them. Go ahead, Kim. So there was a bunch of questions that kind of got at this idea of, do we need this tax abatement in order to see mixed-use development in these areas? And we gathered up the, all of the examples that we are aware of, of mixed-use development in the Portland region. It's not 100% of every mixed-use development that has ever been built, but focused on areas outside of the Port, outside of the city of Portland and within the last 10 years. And there's only one development that we're aware of that is mixed-use in the sense that it has an actual commercial space, leasable commercial space on the bottom and residential above, that's been built within the last 10 years, the last eight, 10 years, sort of this development cycle, outside the city of Portland, but in the region, that is not getting any sort of public support, public financial support. That one's currently in development and it's very retail-heavy and on a very busy street. And all the rest of the examples that we're aware of have all had some kind of public financial support, whether that's tax abatement, urban renewal. In some cases, they got reductions in system development charges or other types of incentives. But they have essentially all, in the suburban area, all had some kind of financial support from the public. And the program BHDC in particular is really targeted, it's a very limited-focused program from the state that is specifically intended to make mixed-use development feasible in places where it is not feasible today. And so that's why you see it being used in a lot of cases in these sort of emerging market situations where there's desire for the form of development, but the market isn't quite there yet. Next slide, please. So there was also, there were a couple of questions that kind of got at, like, how much money are we talking about in terms of tax revenue that the city would not be collecting? And so we used a couple of example developments to say, you know, if this were built with market conditions in, in Wilsonville, about how much would we expect it to be paying in taxes if it were paying all of its taxes? And then what if we applied this vertical housing development zone abatement? And so what we found is that, you know, that dark blue bar on the bottom, that's what you would be getting if that land stayed vacant. So it's this very low bar in the bottom for vacant land. That medium blue shows you what you would collect if it developed with the vertical housing development zones. You can see that a lot of the value is taxed, not, in, in most cases, it'll be less than half. But you do collect taxes on some of the value and then there is an abatement. So you would be giving up some tax revenue, but you would certainly be collecting more revenue than if you didn't see development at all. And when we, the examples that we looked at, about two years after the abatement expires, you would have collected more revenue than you have abated. So there's some lost revenue if you think you would get that development, unsubsidized, but again, it kind of depends what the alternative is. Next slide, please. And so there were also a couple of questions that really got at a desire to see, to see not just a building that has space, but to see businesses that would help kind of create vibrancy and provide services to these areas. That is a totally understandable goal. BHDC is not a great tool for that. It's not designed for that purpose. And so there are a couple of jurisdictions that have some special, city-specific criteria, but they don't really get too much into the details of the types of businesses. It's not, it's not great for that because you, you need to kind of give certainty about the abatement before the building is built. And you can't really know all the businesses that are gonna occupy the building over even a 10-year period before it's out of the ground. And so additional programs and incentives can really be helpful. Several of the jurisdictions have other programs that support businesses in moving into space in particular areas. And those types of incentives that target at a business level can really be more helpful to kind of curate a mix of businesses and support businesses locating in a specific area. Next slide, please. So then another set of questions kind of got at, you know, BHDC, it can theoretically encourage affordable units within a development. It has this additional incentive, in theory, for affordability, but it's rarely been used in practice. And when we looked at it, the math is just very clear. It's sort of an order of magnitude difference of how much additional benefit you're getting with that affordability incentive compared to how much rent you have to give up in order to get it. And it just, it does not, the additional incentive for affordability does not come close to outweighing the, the lost rents of those affordable units. And there are a variety of other tools that are much more effective in supporting affordable housing. And city already has tax abatement that are specific to certain kinds of regulated affordable housing. And even for kind of a mixed-income, you know, market rate development with some affordable units, there are still other tax abatement programs that are better tuned to that purpose. This one just isn't really designed with that at the forefront. Next slide, please. So I touched on several of these. There are, there are a couple of alternatives that you could consider if this isn't getting it exactly what you want, but there are other ways of getting, providing financial incentives for mixed use. As I mentioned, some of the other things that other jurisdictions have used, but grants, loans, reductions in system development charges, other forms of public-private partnerships. And for businesses, grants and loans can be helpful there as well. Also things like events and marketing and things that kind of help draw people to the place that you're trying to support new business growth can be helpful. And then, as I mentioned, there are other tax exemption programs, as well as, you know, things like grants or loans that can better support affordable and mixed-income housing. And then we have a couple of questions back to you, but Kim, do you want to take councillor questions first or just go straight to our questions to them?
Well, I would say, feel free, Mayor Fitzgerald, if you want to just facilitate a conversation around these questions and include any questions that you might have within that, I think that would work best. I think what we want to take away is, you know, figuring out what our next steps are as a project team. If there's additional information that this council needs to provide us with direction, we can look into that. Or if you feel like you have the information you want to give us direction on either or both of the Village Center and Town Center. Thank you.
So I would just encourage the councillors to let us just come forth with your questions if you have any, any, do we have any questions right now from anyone? Councillor Leaham?
Well, I guess I was reading this other thing when you went, when you were on the slide about business. If you could back up to that slide, not that one, not that one. What's the slide before this one? Tax revenue. Okay, so it's the one after that. It's not designed to encourage a particular mix of businesses, but how do we define retail anyway? So if we're going to define retail as opposed to housing on the, on the first floor, how are we defining that? Because I think what took some of us by surprise in the previous run at this was that the retail was really adjunct to the housing. In other words, it was like post boxes and workout space for the residents, you know, things that would ordinarily be just for the residents in that building, which doesn't in my mind fall under the definition of retail. So I understand that it's not designed to encourage a particular mix of businesses, but we must somewhere in this define what retail is and what it isn't, so that it isn't just, you know, a lobby for the, for the residents, that just serves the residents of the building. Because the whole idea of it is to serve the Village Center, not just the people who live in the building. So that would be my main question is, is where that distinction is for how we define retail, if that's part of the requirement is that the first floor is supposed to be retail. What is that? So that's my, that's my main question about that.
Well, can I take a start at that? So the statute talks about non-residential space, so it doesn't specifically say retail. My initial reaction in terms of, you know, honing in on how you would define it is that retail is inherently a leasable space. And so if you have something that is more of a non, non-residential but amenitized space for the building, that that wouldn't inherently be leasable. But if you don't have any sort of definition around that, then I think some of those spaces can count towards it. But to me, a retail space is something that's carved out as a separate space to then be leased by that end-user business. Becky, I don't know if there's anything you would add to that definition?
Yeah. And the, the statute notes that it has to be built to building code standards for commercial use or planned for commercial use on completion, but, but some residential community space type of things can be built to commercial code, so that may not go far enough to just rely on, on the statute. And so some of the other examples talk about things like, you know, a space where it's operated by some, an entity engaged in the exchange of goods or services with the public or, and then Milwaukee just says, it, it, the residential and non-residential use must be committed to the city's satisfaction. And so that's a little more broad, but I would say there are various ways that you could try to define it. I would consider looking to your zoning code as well, just because it's nice to have a consistent, you know, you know if you need this definition in the zoning code that you qualify or things like that. That's another option to consider. And then one other thing that might be helpful, so Beaverton has a, like, a, like an Excel template for applicants to fill in and it kind of shows you where to put, like, your residential common areas and things like that, which are counted as residential pretty clearly. And so I think there's both a definition piece that you probably do want to be a little more clear and specific than statute, you know, look at some examples, and the sort of informational just clarity to the applicant side, that it's like, yes, that if it's a workout space that's only accessible to residents, it's not publicly accessible, because I think being publicly, you know, open to the public is part of it. You know, you shouldn't have to swipe into things. I guess gyms, private gyms maybe are a, a kind of a gray area there. But in any case, I think you do want to have some definitions that are a little bit more specific than statute. And, and you can also help provide some guidance for applicants in, in just informational materials, let's tell them where to count things.
I, I share councillor Leaham's, you know, if you're, if you're looking for direction from us, I, I would also share that her concern about the public space moving forward, that if we allocate that the space is actually some definition that allows for either examples or broad enough that we can, that it's not gonna be a lobby and private space for, for the residents, that it actually is. Otherwise, you know, I, I guess I look at this conceptually as an opportunity to get retail or commercial space that we otherwise wouldn't be able to get through this incentive. And if we are not going to take advantage of that, there's no point in us giving the incentive and the tax abatement. So I would, I think there's some good examples in the Tigard and, and even in some of the vague in, in Milwaukee and Beaverton, but I think staff could look at our own and come up with some language that would, that would preclude the builder from just making this be non-commercial or not open to the public. One of the things I wondered about is, as I read through all of the information, I wondered if we're trying to do too much by trying to look at a concept of the vertical housing and then trying to overlay affordability and equitable housing on, on top of that. I, I don't think there's any advantage to us doing something that is going to disincentivize builders by putting so many restrictions on them that they, you know, they don't see this as a benefit. One of the things I wondered about, although, was there was no mention, unless I just didn't read it correctly, of the density bonus that Clackamas County is currently proposing. And so I, I, I'm not, I guess, asking for that to be explained tonight, but it may be something to look at to see whether there is some way to look at that without trying to overlay something that says you'll have, you know, it will have affordable, low-income housing. And the other thing that I had a little bit of concern about had to do with rent. And the question I have is, is it anticipated that all of the residential would be rental? And that there would be no ownership in any of these units?
So I guess I don't know if we have any, it didn't come across, I don't think, any examples that defined how the residential, whether or not it's ownership or rental. That being said, you know, I kind of look at this from a land use perspective, since that's what I deal with on a day-to-day basis. And, you know, it's typically from a land use and zoning perspective, and when we're looking at multifamily, we're not necessarily defining rental versus ownership. That's not how our development code would regulate it. And so I, as I see it, I would, you know, look at something like this to be an applied, applied in a similar way. You know, when we're reviewing a development application, we're not judging it by whether or not it's ownership or rental. And so I would see, my gut reaction to that would be wanting to make sure that having a program like this would be aligned with how we're reviewing a land use application.
Okay. Because it seemed like from the review of the material from Eco Northwest that it talked about rental, 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 rental income. And, and so that just kind of threw a little red flag up for me, that there was an assumption being made that this would all be rental property, so.
I can explain that, which, and Kim is right, that the program does not, is not limited to rental. But if you think about the timing of receiving a tax abatement on a rental development, the value of that tax abatement flows to the developer. And the developer, you know, they may sell it after a couple of years, but it's one entity, you know, that's either paying for this investment property and then they're getting the tax abatement, or the developer is holding it over that 10-year period. And so they put in the upfront cost and they receive the benefit. If it is condominium development, the developer builds it, sells the unit, that home buyer receives the tax abatement. Maybe they're willing to pay more for the condo because it has reduced taxes. But I'm not aware of this having been applied to any condominium developments and thinking about how you would do the tax, like, reductions makes my head hurt. But I, so I think it is theoretically possible, but practically pretty unlikely that you would use this program with a condominium development because it's, it's asking you to make an expensive investment on the front end that you will receive an incentive for over a 10-year period. And if you're not the same entity that's putting in the cost and then receiving the benefit, it doesn't always, like, the full value of that tax abatement doesn't, doesn't make it up to the builder. So I think it is, it is a much more effective incentive for rental housing than for condominium.
Could I ask that question a different way? Would there be anything that precluded somebody who made that outlay of capital after 10 years going to private ownership, selling individual units? Would there be anything that precluded that from happening?
No. And they could, I mean, they could build it, create the condominium, but not sell the units for 10 years so that they would receive the benefits, or they could do a condominium conversion after 10 years and then sell the units. There wouldn't be anything precluding that.
Okay.
Counsel, oh, go ahead. Okay. So, so, so what I hear you saying then is that through this program, we are probably incentivizing additional apartment rentals. Is that correct?
That's typically how these projects go, is that somebody wants to make an investment, they're looking for an incentive. So then you look at, how long is that payback? And it's typically the 10-year period, so, yes.
So, so the only other question that I have has to do with how, I know in the staff notes, it said that affordability is one of the goals. And so I think it says, an affordable housing element is also a desired goal. So are we trying to do both? Are we trying to figure out how to do both?
I would say that from planning's perspective and the research that's been done on this, it's pretty clear to me that the main purpose of doing a vertical housing tax abatement is to get the ground floor commercial space.
Okay. Thank you. And I would support that.
I would just say that also, we have the TOD that we're looking at, that is expressly for affordable housing. That's the partnership that we have, that's Smart is pursuing, we have a grant for.
Yes.
So it's not like, if you don't get it here, you can't get it somewhere else.
Right.
So just keep that in mind.
Right, right. So that was the transit-oriented development, just the acronym?
Did I say Todd? I apologize.
But the transit-oriented development. And I wanted to go to council president Ocreval and see if she has some comments. And I also wanted to ask to clarify something about the orientation of this material. Because when we last discussed this, which was May 3rd, and all of the councillors were present during that discussion, except councillor Ben West was excused, and unfortunately, he is not here tonight to discuss this either. But I believe some of the questions that the councillors came up with, it was kind of like an overarching set of questions to orient us to this so that we could have the best possible comprehensive view of it. And I believe that might be where the discussion of affordable housing came up, is people asked, well- well, could this work for affordable housing? What I'm gathering from this is, it really is not the best way. The vertical housing tax abatement tool does not appear to be the, a first-choice way to help achieve affordable housing. There are better ways to do that, and you've outlined. Is that pretty much?
Yes.
The case, so that came from our questions. And then we also asked a question that is, some of the councilors, that is outlined here, is how can we ensure that abated properties include vibrant commercial uses? And I think we're getting to that one. But that is a question I get from residents at Villebois a lot, is gee, I moved here and I bought this condo. I'm a homeowner, maybe a townhouse condo or house, or they rent an apartment there. And one of the things that attracted them was this Village Center, which everyone wanted to begin with. I mean, people who moved there certainly knew about that. And then our economy presented these incredible challenges from the beginning, and luckily, we've had very good results in recovery from a lot of that. But, but I do hear people saying, you know, how can we get some more stores here? When is this going to be built? I get some regular questions along those lines. And so some of those questions that came to us had to do with maybe some of the things you're going to answer about these examples that you gave us. And I did visit some of these developments since our last meeting. But I think what I'm hearing you say is this, the overwhelming reason we would look at this is to find a way to make it possible to have some active, fun, you know, quoting neighbors I hear from. What are some ways we can get some stores in here and some shops? And this is one of the ways. Is that, is that right?
Yes, I think it's one piece of it. And it's, I think the biggest hurdle is getting a developer to build the space in the current market conditions, so this.
Right, because it's hard to get somebody to do this. So I just wanted to now go to Council President Ockerball.
Thank you. No, I agree with a lot of the questions and discussions that we've had on this. And I felt that the packet materials that were supplied were very good. Thank you, this was an excellent packet. You know, it outlined, I felt to me, my observation was, these buildings are expensive. And there was some explanation or discussion of how, you know, perhaps the parking that's involved in these buildings, the type of structure that increases the cost, the fire separation that has to happen with these, between the commercial and the residential, that these are expensive buildings. So this is looking at how, how can we make this building happen in the first place? Like, how can, how can the beginning start for, for the building? I was interested in Councilor Leham's questions about that, you know, the ground floor space. And on page 10 of the Echo Northwest packet, I think it's page 19 of our overall council packet, there's a paragraph in there that says statutory requirements. And it kind of talks about the, the whole 50% of the ground floor and the public street facing and stuff. But there was a line in there that I liked when I read it. And I'm wondering if it might help our discussion, too. It says residential common areas and amenity space that is associated with the residential use do not count toward the commercial space requirement. And I thought that was pretty clear. So it was interesting to hear, though, that perhaps we do need to define it in our program. Maybe, you know, something that aligns with that text that we have there, or something that underscores that idea. Because I think that's a, that's an interest that I have and I'm hearing other councilors have as well, that we don't just want an open space for the public, but we want something that's engaging, that makes this building a real win for the whole community. So I think it's important that we, that we define that in the program, that we're looking for something that's going to be engaging and going to feel like, you know, something that the, the community can enjoy and use and benefit from. I also really appreciated the section in our packet in your presentation where we're talking about the foregone revenue. What does this tax abatement mean? And to have those details is important for us and to look at long-term view of what these, these buildings could bring for the community. I think that's important, too. So thank you for supplying that information.
I, I did have a question, and I don't want to interrupt. We interrupt, we stopped you with some questions. So before we go to more questions, should we let you continue with the presentation?
Well, this is really it. And I think you're, some of what I'm hearing, I'm starting to hear some answers to some of these questions. So continue on.
Well, I did have a question on page, page 13, on the printed packet, which is 22 of 143 of the whole packet. So drivers of business viability, which I think that's something that, that is really weighing on my mind, too. Because what, what are some types of businesses that have a good chance of working in either the Villebois Village Center or Town Center in its future development? And so we're really looking at, can this tool work for us? And I see that you've given a couple of examples of retail types, a small to mid-size grocery store and a restaurant, coffee shop. Does, does Echo Northwest, or do you have any other examples of, of service businesses and, and other types that you've looked at that tend to work well in this kind of area? And what kind of population they need to be viable?
So we could certainly gather some additional information with specifics about, you know, population that would be needed for different types of service businesses. I would say that, you know, a grocery store, you notice it, high visibility and access is really important. And I think you have really different situations in your Town Center and in your Village Center.
Right.
Your Town Center has much more pass-by traffic. There's people going to that area already from outside of that area. It, it has, you know, it, there's already kind of a critical mass there. And so you have a really different situation where you're, I think, just trying to maybe attract businesses that are more, something that you might want to, like, walk around, more of a lifestyle thing, maybe even stay for, it's not just like, drive into your business at home. But something that might, like, attract people to stay and, and kind of have more of a, like, place-making effect in the area. And so I think that's more of a question of kind of curating for specific kind of types of businesses. Maybe it's more food and beverage, things that people might stay longer. But I think you have more of the fundamentals in place there. And it's maybe a little bit of an easier kind of pivot towards different types of businesses. And I think as you make improvements in that area, that businesses will respond. So I think the Town Center, the business mix may need less support to go where you're trying to go. Not to say that, you know, some focused public attention couldn't help it get there faster or kind of support really, you know, more local businesses or things like that, where you might have some other public interest. In the Village Center, you just don't have the same kind of visibility and pass-through traffic. And people coming there who don't live there already, you do have a good, I mean, you've got pretty good density and clusters of people. And there's, you know, parks and plazas and things that, like, residents have many reasons to go there. But it just doesn't have that same kind of draw and catchment area that the Town Center has. And so I think in that area, you have to think more about businesses that are really going to serve the residents that live there. And they have to be able to draw enough customers from however many housing units there are kind of within that development and maybe a little bit from adjacent developments to be able to survive. So I think, you know, coffee shops can work. Things like, you know, fitness, yoga and similar kind of athletic studios can work. Neither of those can typically pay very high rents. And particularly, you know, if they're kind of just getting started, that rent can be kind of an obstacle. So I think we could try to gather a little bit more information for more specific types of businesses. But I think in general, you're thinking, you know, you see things like the nail salons, the fitness, yoga, et cetera, maybe a little coffee shop. Sometimes you'll get kind of like a little boutiquey, like, children's boutiquey clothes or things like that, kind of specialty retail, that maybe you get people kind of coming to, they know about it. But it's a little different kind of business mix that might, that, you know, might be able to eventually thrive there. I do think that if you had, you know, two buildings with commercial space, like, to some extent, you need that critical mass. And so I think having two buildings with commercial space, although you are, you're sort of doubling your space problem that you need to fill, and that, you know, having a lot of vacant space isn't always great. If you, you know, it's kind of like, if you get one, you can get two sometimes. The businesses can kind of support and reinforce each other. And so that's where I think if you wanted to do things like kind of improvement grants that kind of help reduce the barriers to get tenants in the door and, and make it easier for them to get started, that that can, you know, maybe help fill a second space just by creating kind of more energy and, and activity.
Could I, could I then just do a follow-up on that? I got from the material that we, we really, it would not serve us well to specify the types of retail or commercial that, that in the course of a builder getting funding to build the building, that would require that they had lined up ahead retail or commercial residents, or lease, less, people to lease those spaces, and that, that would be a disincentive. So I, I don't know where this discussion is taking us because that's step two.
Yes, that would be a step two. And so I think Beaverton is one example.
That's true, I wasn't trying, good point. Because I didn't mean to imply that. I, I wanted to get to a point of envisioning what is possible. And on page, which you did help with that, you know, and that certain businesses would have a better types of businesses in, in these two different locations. And so then when we go to page 16, where it talks about supporting the mixed-use development and the, and the things to potentially support, make it more appealing for that, maybe, you know, it's not a really, it wouldn't, maybe, maybe would attract businesses that need some support. Or you could have better luck if you had these other alternatives.
Yes, and so I would say that it's something else you could consider at some point. It is a little bit separate. I, I think the main goal of just highlighting this is the fact that this is, this abatement helps create the space. It's not going to solve all of those, those comments and questions that we hear. But I, I do think that, from the standpoint of fulfilling a vision, a couple of different visions that we have as a city, that might be considered, you know, particularly with Villebois, could be something that's considered as a follow-on type of economic development program to have at some point down the road.
And there's opportunity to have that conversation. If the city wanted to get some kind of specific commercial component in a building, that is something that you could negotiate with the developer, there may be some ask on the part of the developer. I'm just thinking of the Villebois commercial space we have now. One of the things I've heard from folks is that when they built those shelves, they didn't include any, like, commercial kitchen or anything like that would encourage a restaurant because it was expensive. So there is an opportunity for conversation down the road to include more robust commercial that's open to the general public. So I think that conversation can be had at the appropriate time.
Yeah. So where, where do we go from here?
That's my question to you. So I think to help us figure out how to move forward.
We want to give you direction.
Yep, yep. So I, I think it's, as I see it, these first two questions, it's kind of, I think, to figure out how we would need to move forward if the council felt like they wanted us to pursue implementation of vertical housing. And the Villebois Village Center, it's, it's fairly cut and dry to us what that boundary is. The Town Center is a much larger place. And I think we would probably want to do a little more research and talk with you all about some options for how we would apply that. And so I think my, the key questions we have are, you know, for the first set of questions, should we continue down this path to pursue this in Villebois? And I've heard, I think, from this conversation that there is some interest in the group to, as we do that, if that's what you would like us to do, to think about that definition and how we apply it for eligibility, going a little bit beyond what the state statute says. And then the second piece is if there is interest for us to continue down the path in Town Center. You know, I think what we would do is come back to a future work session and prepare some conversations and questions and some additional work to help us talk through what a boundary or boundaries would be for that, because it might not be the whole area.
Sounds good to me. Excellent. Thank you. So I think Council, Council President Ockerball.
Yeah, and, and just to clarify, our, the questions that I think everyone's been asking are, are not because we're not supportive of vertical housing tax credits, but, but we want to make sure that we get what we think we're getting for them. That we get the benefit that we're, that we had in mind.
I, I would agree with that. Just, we want it to be successful, so it's just to understand how it works.
Okay.
All right.
Know what you need?
Yep, thank you very much.
Thank you. And now we will move to the PDB alternative contracting method for the Beckman Road Corridor project with Ms. Huffman and Crosshour.
What is PDB? You already know that? Development, business. What's PDB?
Progressive, progressive design build?
Progressive design build. Okay.
Another one of those acronyms.
Good evening, good evening, Mayor and Council. Can everybody hear me all right?
Yes.
All right. I am Dominique Cuffman, a civil engineer here with the city. And I should be joined by Nancy Crosshour, a consulting engineer. I'm not sure if she's been switched over just yet. But I'll get started. Can everybody see my screen?
There you go.
Okay, all right.
We see Nancy now.
All right.
Yes, we can see your screen.
Excellent, all right. So we are here today to discuss our request for authorization to use the progressive design build alternative contracting method for the Beckman Road Corridor project. So we have a fairly comprehensive package put together in the staff report, the resolution, and the attached findings. So tonight, we're hoping to summarize those documents and to answer any questions you may have. We have recently and often discussed the Beckman Dip Project with you that will make needed safety improvements to the Beckman Road. Based on our capital improvement plans, there are three other projects along this section of Beckman Road Corridor that are interconnected with the bridge project. We've got the Canyon Creek Beckman Traffic Signal, the Beckman Road Sanitary Sewer, and the Beckman Road Street Improvements. So it is logical, based on project delivery time, potential cost savings, disruption, or limiting disruption to the public and overall efficiency, to join these four projects together into a Beckman Road Corridor project. And the four projects can be most successfully integrated if one design and construction team does that, does that work together. So integrating these into one. So integrating these into one will best assure proper coordination and fewer disruptions to design and construction. These have long been identified in, as needed infrastructure in the Frog Pond Master Plan and the associated capital improvement plans, as, as I already mentioned. Completing this work as three or four separate projects will be a little bit more cumbersome and will make it difficult to coordinate design details and really efficiently phase construction. So why alternative delivery? So progressive design build or PDB is recommended due to the complexity of the bridge and the creek work, the staging complexities of the four projects, and the need to complete these projects within the same timeframe. So PDB is advantageous for this project as it allows the city to select a contractor based on qualifications, and the contractor will be selected with their design team. So one, one team with the goal of being a collaborative and cohesive working team. The contractor will be involved early and will be able to use their expertise to identify potential cost and schedule savings, and will be present early on to, to provide ways to increase overall project productivity. So we also hope to utilize the contractor's expertise to tailor the scheduling and phasing of construction to best meet the needs of the stakeholders and the public to reduce the overall impact in that corridor. The contractor is also able to help identify project risks early on and develop plans to mitigate those risks. There will be efficiencies to staging similar work together and again, reducing the staging impacts such as lane closures and reducing overall construction time in the corridor. There will be a reduction in project uncertainty by having the contractor involved during design, which translates into cost savings to the city in, in the form of reduced contingency. So along with a PDB contract, the staff recommends that the city utilize an owner's representative, which will assist with specialized expertise, particularly with the PDB contracting. So some policy considerations. Progressive design build procurement and in general, alternative project delivery is, is really becoming a more common method of contracting for large, complex projects such as the Beckman Road corridor project. Recent projects in our area include the Willamette Water Supply Program, which has used an alternative contracting method on the raw water facility with successful results. The city is currently using an alternative contracting method on the water treatment plan expansion project as well. Under Oregon statutes, the local contract review board may provide an exemption from competitive bidding requirements as long as the alternative contracting process is unlikely to encourage favoritism or diminish competition. And detailed findings for the exemption from competitive bidding is provided as Exhibit A to the resolution. And it's important to highlight the findings, which describe how our solicitation for both design and construction services will, will still be competitive. So what we need from council, why we're here. City Council, as the local contract review board, may provide an exemption from competitive bidding requirements. There is a mandatory public hearing tonight, and this has been noticed in the DJC. And tonight, we are looking for authorization to proceed with alternative project delivery. And the next steps, so moving forward, we will be advertising for an owner's rep in August, assuming authorization to proceed. And they will help us solicit and select a PDB team. And some of the key dates moving forward, and of course, I need to note that these dates are subject to change, but design will begin in late fall or winter, and construction is anticipated to begin in the summer of 2023. So that was a quick overview, but does anybody have questions or facts?
You? Hi? I think, I think this is a really wise way to approach this project, and I think the city's been successful with this approach in the past. And I also just wanted to clarify that this is not going to increase the costs of the project in, in any way, according to the exhibits that, that were in the staff report, which I think is, that would be the, that would be probably one of my only concerns. But to have overall site, overall project coordination is really, is really a good approach, and I certainly support this. Council President Ockerball.
Thank you. I, I agree. You know, these, these projects that we're talking about are large projects, and they will have disruption for the, the community, you know? I mean, we've talked about some of, with the Beckman Bridge, and, you know, these are improvements that there, there will be times where the road is closed or, you know, things like that in order for the work to be done safely. Being able to minimize those impacts and coordinate so we can have smaller, shorter time periods where things are closed, I think that's going to be very appreciated by our community. So I, I thank you for pursuing those options that will help coordinate things and, and let it all go much smoother. I think that this seems to be a good plan to, to get work done in a, in a good way, but also kind of minimize some of those disruptions that the community will, you know, inevitably feel from, from the improvements that need to happen there.
Any other comments?
No.
I agree with Councilor Linville's comments and Council President Ockerball, and I've had a, a project like this that I was able to participate in, in some kind of, in ancillary way, and all the parties involved found it to be successful. It's a different kind of a project, but for the same reasons we're talking about here. So I think the way you've outlined it in the, the staff packet and the work you've gone through to examine it makes it something that I do also believe will be useful for our city.
Okay. Great. Well, I guess without further ado, we will see you again at public hearing tonight.
Thank you.
Thank you.
So I wanted to make another comment about the order of agenda before we conclude our work session. I already commented that we would like to move the one item to new business as we described. I also, just a minor point, but under mayor's business, where I have items A, B, and C, I would like to reverse the order of those, if that's all right with everyone, because we have Citizen Academy graduation. I think it would be nice to do that first. So we'll do C, B, and then A.
Okay.
And so now we will move to Ms. Mombert with the Community Enhancement Program Recommendations.
Great. Good evening, Mayor and Council. I am Zoe Mombert, the Assistant to the City Manager, and this evening, I'm here to share the recommendations of the Wilsonville Metro Community Enhancement Committee. This is the second round of applications that we did this year. They were focused on storm relief, and it will be Resolution Number 2920 in New Business this evening. I wanted to just provide a little bit of background for those that may not be familiar with this program. I'll skip through it and provide more detail when we get to the regular meeting. But the important thing here is that we receive $1 for every one ton of wet waste that's processed at the transfer station here, which is Republic Services. And that's how these dollars fund the program. We received the funds from Metro because of the intergovernmental agreement that we have with them, which was extended just a few months ago. We did a lot of outreach. So the committee met in May and decided to move forward with the second round of applications. In that, they wanted to ensure that the community knew about the program. I had recommended that we start the application process on May 14th and close it by June 15th. And they backed up and said, you know what, we want to make sure there's more time for people to learn about the program and to apply. So they requested that the application deadline be June 25th. So there was an extra few days from what I had originally recommended to them. We did direct outreach to the homeowners' associations that we had contact information for, to local nonprofits and the school district. We also had an article in our Boones Ferry Messenger, which goes to every home in Wilsonville, and promoted this on Facebook. So we made a, a really specific effort to ensure that everyone in the community was aware of this opportunity. These are the program goals that are specific to the Community Enhancement Program. These goals were still in effect, as with any of our programs or funding through this program, and these were the specific goals that the committee set for this round of applications. So the, in order to qualify, they had to request either stump grinding for street trees, tree pruning and maintenance to preserve trees, or do cleanup for an SROZ area, which is a significant resource zone. We had a project budget when we came to you in May that was nearly $107,000. There was a little over $17,000 that was allocated in our first round, and then in the second round, there was up to $90,000. But to be conservative and make sure that we're not overspending this pot of money, we were looking at targeting around $80,000. These are the recommended projects. I will go over a high level overview of them. They were in your packet, so I don't want to go into too much detail, but happy to answer any questions you have. So the first project is the Friends of Trees Tree Pruning Project. This is the only project that the committee recommended providing full funding for, and they had requested $15,000 to provide pruning to about 100 trees in town. So the intent here is to prune the trees to preserve them, to ensure that we don't have to remove more trees since we lost so many during the storm. They will also provide educational materials and training to our community. So it's not just one-time pruning. This is pruning that our community will now know how to do so that we can continue to do this in the future. The next project is the City of Wilsonville Stump Grinding Project. They requested $49,000 to do stump grinding for approximately 140 trees. The committee recommended the funding of $42,000, so that'll be between 100 and 120 trees. And the intent here is that the city will have the contracts for street tree grinding, and then there will be an application process where folks that were impacted by the storm that have their tree removed but need the stump ground in order to replace the tree, which is a requirement by the city, that they'll be able to request this, will have an application process to try to meet as many areas of the city as possible and be as fair as possible. So this would have next steps to it for the city, but not through this process. Next is the Arbor-Villebois Storm Damage Cleanup. Arbor-Villebois's original application that was in your packet noted a request of about $60,000 plus. So when I received this application, I reached out to them and we talked about it, only $23,000 of their request qualified, because this is a reimbursement program. So the other 40-some thousand didn't qualify because it had already been spent. This is for the damaged trees in the area. They have a SROZ on Louisiana that they're responsible for, approximately 17 acres and 100, excuse me, 1,400 trees, which were required per city plan. So there's a large tree canopy in this area, and there was a lot of impact due to the And there's about 300 homeowners in the Villebois HOA, and like many, including the city, this was an unplanned event that many did not plan to have resources available for this kind of work. So the committee had recommended approving $20,800 for this project. The next project is the Alcatraz Shriner Request. In the packet, it requested $6,600. So this was for three days' work, and two of those days would be focused on swale trees. Through the process with the committee, they determined that the only tree that seemed reasonable and to fit the qualifications was the one large oak tree. So the $2,200 that they're recommending is for pruning of a large oak tree to help preserve it. Finally, River Green HOA Tree Pruning. This is an HOA that requested $1,350 for three trees on one property that impact other properties, and the committee wanted to provide something to them to help out, but didn't feel that they wanted to provide the full amount. So they have suggested a, an allocation of $500 for this project. And finally, this is on your, it's now, it's not, it's not consent agenda anymore. It's now on New Business, but for the allocation of the second round of Community Enhancement funds, it's Resolution 2920. And I would be happy to answer any questions you have, and I'll go through this in more detail for those that are watching later this evening, or if there's parts that you don't want me to talk about again, I can do that as well.
We have that conversation all the time.
Oh, I don't know. Do I push this button? Is this one about to?
Sure.
You don't want to put that button.
No, this is good.
I just wanted to ask, is, is the stump grinding, is that all for street trees, street tree replacement?
Yes. So the city application, the stump grinding had to be of street trees
Street trees.
in order to do the replacement. So the hope is that there, the planning department already has a program with the Friends of Trees group to do planting in the fall and winter. So the hope here is that we can take care of the stump grinding this summer, fall, so that people could then be able to replant those trees and take advantage of that program.
And, and does that include residential and commercial trees, that stump grinding?
We've only talked about residential, but we would have to go back and talk about that. We, we
I think the intent is for residential, yes.
The intent is for residential.
So I, so I heard. So I heard. Okay, that's all my questions.
Council President Ockerball.
Thank you. Thank you for the presentation, and when we hear some more in our, in our next meeting, or this information may still be coming, but it'll be great to hear how the, the news of this program will be distributed so that people can apply for those grants. And I mean, I assume Boones Ferry Messenger is a great tool, right? So that, that'll probably be used, but what other methods might be used to try to do that outreach so people know about, about that program? I guess as well as the training opportunities that Friends of Trees will be doing too, because that's an opportunity for individuals to, to seek assistance and support in taking care of the trees as well. So that'll be an important part for the success, I think, of both of those portions.
Yes, and I believe the current plan, I, I would defer to Miranda, who's in the back of the room, on the Friends of Trees planting event, but I know that the Friends of Trees in their application talked about reaching out to people for the program. We would put it in the Boones Ferry Messenger. And then with the stump grinding program, we will reach out through the Boones Ferry Messenger, and then also the, we have some interns that worked with the Public Works Department and have identified all the trees that were removed and have stumps. So we would also try to do direct outreach to the addresses that are connected to those trees, to hopefully make sure that everyone knows that this is available to them.
That's a great idea, to, to have that direct outreach. And I wonder, too, if it's one of those things where we have a blurb, you know, on the Facebook page or social media or whatever, if the Facebook page or social media or whatever, if, if like, the headline announcement part at least, and maybe more, but if that could be translated Spanish, so, so everybody has that information. That might be a good idea.
Great. Thank you.
Thank you. I was on the committee, so I really don't have any questions about, about how the allocations. I, I guess my only comment is that this is not enough money to do what our community needs in terms of taking care of the damage that was done by the ice storm, and even the money that is going to be used by the City of Wilsonville if the council approves that. The 100 to 120 stumps is not anywhere near the number of stumps that are out there that need to be ground. So it's, you know, the committee, I think, did a good job of trying to allocate the resources as equitable as possible.
Well, thank you. I have a question related to that comment made by Councilor Linville. I mean, we get one allocation a year from, from the dumping fees. The next refreshing of that fund would be about when next year?
I think we just got an email today, didn't we, on that topic?
Yeah, so we just received our numbers for 20, for fiscal year 2021, and we received just, I think it was like 81, yeah, 81,000 is what we received this year, and nearly 86,000 the prior year. So it really ebbs and flows every year. We normally budget for about 80,000, so we will meet in the spring to review the applications for 2022. And then we'll have the funds, so we'll have this list again come July of 2022. So when we meet in the beginning of '22, it will be for the allocation of 2022. So this is still the allocation from 2021. As you'll recall, the city withdrew a number of applications, so that we still had funding available to do this.
Related to the ice storm?
Exactly.
And at our last meeting, we discussed the much bigger storm damage costs, and we had a very detailed report on that.
Yeah.
I had a, thank you for that. I had a question on the applications that were received by the committee. Were there, were there any applications that were received that were, that did not qualify? Or did you really address basically all of the qualifying applications?
Yes, we reviewed all the qualifying applications. There was one that was withdrawn. It was for tree replacement and stump grinding. I informed them that the tree replacement was not something that was allowed during this process, but we could review the stump grinding, which they moved forward, and then someone in their community went ahead and ground the stumps. So they withdrew their applications.
The stumps are gone?
Yep. And they, you know, it's a reimbursement program. Additionally, you cannot already have funds, can't replace something in your budget already.
All right. Thank you. Any other questions?
Sounds good.
Thank you.
Thank you. With that, I believe we've completed our work session?
What will you do with your 14 minutes?
I just wanted to make sure I wasn't missing something.
Nope.
Okay. We'll adjourn the work session and reconvene the regular meeting of the city council at 7:00 PM.